Right, it's seven o'clock. So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hall. I'm James Quisenberry from Ward Seven. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, thank you. First order of business is the approval of minutes of previous meetings. Do we not have any minutes? All right, that'll be quick then. Next is additions to the agenda. I would like to suggest with the approval of council that we move public input, presentations of public input, to be prior to item E, to be prior to item D, so that members of the public can speak before we go into closed session. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all right. So...
Mr. Chair?
I do have another. We would like to ask that the closed session topic for, related to collective bargaining, be removed from the agenda.
Okay, that will be removed? All right, if nobody has an objection, I'll consider that approved by unanimous consent. So that would make our next item of business, the presentations and public input. Would any members of the public wish to approach and address the members of the city council? When you come up, please state your name. Thank you.
My name is Derek Bries. I live in Urbana, Ward Four, and I'm here to talk about the collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police on behalf of the UPD. So like I mentioned last time, I really encourage you all to vote no on this contract. The process that it's been negotiated by is not transparent. It's very secretive. It's very rushed. You've got six months. What's their sense of urgency to get this approved so quickly? So that's the first of my major concerns, is just the way that this process has gone, that it's not transparent, it's not open to the public. And as far as I understand it, you were also sort of horn-swaggled by FOP into a single-day bargaining session, which is absurd. If you've ever been involved in any collective bargaining processes, that is not typically how it goes. So the process, I think, is unacceptable. And then second, the contract itself is unacceptable. I don't know if anybody on city council has ever looked at another collective bargaining agreement. They don't look like this. They don't look like this at all. Look at the FOP local, I think, 178 on campus. You know what they have in their contract? They have an article that specifically stipulates what is acceptable and unacceptable behavior and the disciplinary actions that can be undertaken by the employer for unacceptable behavior. Why do the police of Urbana not have that? Are you telling me the city of Urbana has less resources, less knowledge, and less care about the people that they oversee than the university does? That's absurd. I didn't vote for the people of the university to represent me. I voted for you people to represent me, and I do not feel represented in this. The people of Urbana are not represented in this process. It is egregious. Also, just the utter disregard of the civilian police review board. I mean, it's laughable to even have an article in the contract when, one, it explicitly states officers don't have to appear before it, and then, two, it states that the civilian police review board can't even be involved in investigating any misconduct by an officer. They could be given access to the documentation after an investigation is held. What's the point? I mean, hopefully, you don't think that this is acceptable. I just, I'm baffled, I'm confused. They're public servants. I don't see how they're serving the public. Their mission statement, look at it, it's on your website, literally says that they work collaboratively with the community. Is there a cop in the building? This is where they work, right? They couldn't even bother to come and hear the public comment? They weren't here last time either. They probably won't be here in the next meeting. How is that cooperative? It is not. This is egregious, this is unfair, this is unjust, this is a despicable process that they've put you all through. I'm not here blaming you. You've got an undue burden here to try to stop something absurd from happening, but you, I really do. I know that it puts you at risk of like unfair bargaining to vote no at this point, but there's time. I would hope that you could at least urge UPD to understand it's in their best interest to listen to the public, to do something to address public concern, and not just bully their way through with basically the exact same contract that they had for the last three years, plus about a million dollars in raises. I mean, there's time, there's six months. Why not try? Why not do something? Because what you're doing now is not enough, and it's not acceptable. So please do not pass this.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hall? Please state your name, and you'll have five minutes. Sorry, I didn't mention that earlier.
My name is Justin. I also live in Urbana. I pretty much agree with what Derek said. I thought that was really well said, but I wrote something down, so I figure I might as well read it.
Could you tip the mic down toward you?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Is that better? So it seems like the police are trying to rush through this proposal as quickly as possible, rather than come up with a contract that explicitly and adequately addresses issues of public safety, including the immediate termination of officers if they're found to have used excessive force or falsified evidence. Because of this, it's easy to see how a lot of people would have a lot of distrust in these institutions. Seems like the police are only looking out for themselves, rather than dealing with public safety in a serious and responsible manner. Again, I really agree with what Derek said, and I don't think there's really that much substantive that I could add, other than just reading this. So yeah, I guess I'm just asking you all to vote no on this contract proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Tony Allegritti. I'm a Urbana resident, Ward One. I'm also on the CPRB, the Civilian Police Review Board. So I'm speaking as a citizen and also as a board member in that capacity. I was pleased to hear that the, or I'm addressing about the FOP contract as well. I'm glad to hear that it's been taken off the agenda, at least for tonight, as a voting action item, to give this council more time to deliberate. I'm not going to speak as to how the negotiations have gone and any of that, but specifically to the CPRB or how that impacts the board I serve on. I would ask the council to look into removing the side letter that is part of the contract. It's my understanding that it's still possible to potentially remove that, and if the council's going to vote yes on the contract, it can be done without it being considered bad faith. Again, I don't know, it's not my area of expertise, but I would urge the council to consider, if they can, removing the side letter, specifically because it really hamstrings any changes that we're seeking in the ordinance, which our board has been looking at. Specifically, I can mention one issue we've been discussing is removing the exemption of people from serving on our board that have a felony conviction. It's a blanket policy, or at least a blanket part of the ordinance. It's actually any conviction or plea, so really, any disposition in a felony case, based on my reading of the ordinance, would prevent someone from serving on that. There are a number of reasons why I think that that type of a scarlet letter would not serve this city in having someone that may have a felony conviction, whether it be recently or 20 years prior, from being on the board. It's a civilian review board, it's meant to have members of the community, and unfortunately, in this country, we incarcerate a large portion of our, and convict a large portion of our, of our community members, and that's disparate, disparately impacted against minorities. So to keep it short, I'd ask, again, the council to review the possibility of removing the CPRB side letter, and I'd be happy to discuss with any council members after this evening, or directed through our director or our chair about that particular issue. So thank you for all your work, thank you for being here tonight. Hopefully, it's not too long, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Would anyone else want to address the council? Please come up, state your name, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is George Vassalatos. I'm a resident of Ward Two. I'm here to express my extreme concern about the 2023-2026 police contract. The fact that council members agreed to a lawyerless one-day meeting and approved this contract is highly concerning. Our elected representatives, you all, were put in power by us and should be focused on serving the community. That means holding a high standard for scrutiny in contract negotiations and not caving to police pressure. It means ensuring transparency and public participation. Voting to lay the contract last month was a great example of listening to the public and doing what was right. Thank you for that, but it also wasn't enough. The contract on the table right now for voting at next week's meeting is abysmal. It doesn't make our community safer. All it does is stall accountability measures from being implemented. Why can't the CPRB call third-party investigations? Why can't officers be called to testify? Why on earth are there no provisions in the contract that terminate cops who falsify evidence, fail to report misconduct, or violate departmental standards for reckless and excessive unjustified force? Common sense provisions like these are an absolute necessity in any police contract and are critical to ensure public safety. I urge all of you to vote no on this contract, whether that's because you're concerned about the lack of accountability in the contract, or just because you care about the democratic process and want to set a precedent of valuing public input over backroom deals. Voting no won't be easy. The police might lie to you or try to intimidate you again, but if they do, they'll be proving your vote correct. The community will have your back if you show some spine. Voting no will take courage. All of us here who have been to a protest know that it's not easy to stand up to the police, and yet thousands of Urbana residents have, and will continue to do so until the department finally comes under strict civilian oversight. Voting no will prove to your constituents that you trust them enough to include them in the process. It'll prove that you trust us to stand with you when push comes to shove. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Come on up. Please state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Sarah Blanco, and I'm an Urbana resident. So I want to urge all council members to vote no on the police contract. I'm really glad that you did not vote yes on it last week. It's really important to, especially with things involving the police, to carefully consider the input of the community and not rush things through without even having a chance to look it over or hear from the community on it. We need a police contract that addresses excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation, civilian oversight. And this will take time, but we have time. The current contract does not expire for another six months, so there is no reason to rush to pass through a contract in the near future. That does not take the community's consistent demand for police accountability into account. We need a transparent process to have a contract that addresses these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Please state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, good evening. My name's Eddie Pratt, Jr. I am a resident of CU, have lived in both Urbana and Champaign on and off for about the last seven and a half years. So I just want to echo the comments of other speakers before me that I absolutely agree with. I just want to throw out some numbers for you guys to think about, seeing that this is an academic community, we love numbers, right? So the census last, you know, cycle around 2017 to 2021 reported that the median household, you know, income is about $37,000 roughly. Now, at the same time, it is also reported through your own outlets that a cop fresh out of the academy would make about $69,000, right? And so within this negotiations, I see this increase. This is something that a lot of people are really frustrated with, when they look at their community and they see that the police have upwards to 40% of the city budget. 3% doesn't sound like it's a big deal. I mean, if we're talking dollars, it shakes out to roughly around 400K, right? Or a little bit south of that, maybe a little bit north of that, depending on the qualifications of the officer in question, right? But we also know that this extreme gap in wages creates inequity in both service and connection, right? Because people who are from different circumstances and been through certain things can only really relate to people who have really been through that, and people who are making such a massive amount more money than they are, more than double, are not going to be able to really connect with those people. I mean, how do you talk to your boss? How do you talk to a millionaire? I mean, you let me know. You let me know. So I mean, really, that's what my real issues are. You know, accountability is something that has to be had, and the only way that we're going to get through this whole, you know, distrust and all of that is if the police in themselves willfully, willfully abide by the will of the people in which they took an oath to protect and serve. That is the only way. There's no shortcuts. And it appears that the police are attempting to take a shortcut. We cannot afford that. We simply cannot. And so I hope that you guys make the right decision. I hope that you don't just chuck this up to necessary evils, because need I remind you, we've had a lot of necessary evils that have helped us to have such a terrible time in this community in the last couple of years. So again, just things to keep in mind. That shakes out to about a million dollars, right? You do realize also that through the past election cycle, there was a vote to see an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Urbana and Champaign to support the SWIFT program, which was initially funded to the tune of about $1 million. I'm not saying that this is something that you should do instead of. I'm just saying that, you know, perhaps we could spend our money differently, and we have six months to do so. So I hope that you will take that time to consider all of those things. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? I do have some communications here. We did receive a letter from the NAACP of Champaign County and the ACLU of Champaign County from Minnie Pearson and Carol Leff that we were asked to include in the record. It didn't ask specifically that it be read out loud, but we will include it in the record. And we have several constituents who have asked for their comments to be read aloud. The first one I have here is from Alex Taylor. It says, "Hi, I'm a PhD student at the University of Illinois, a resident of Champaign-Urbana, and I am concerned about the new Fraternal Order of Police Union contract for 2023 through 2026 being brought before the Urbana City Council on January 3, 2023. I urge all council members to vote against the hastily negotiated Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023 through 2026. This contract fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation, and civilian oversight. Given the ongoing issues with law enforcement locally and nationally, it is unacceptable to pass a contract that fails to address the safety issues that an unchecked police force can present to our community. Equally unacceptable are the deceptive negotiation tactics used by the FOP to push this through six months early without any transparency or respect for the democratic process. As a concerned member of the Urbana community, I ask that you vote no on Resolution 2022-12-091R." Next, I have from Leslie Owens. "Dear Urbana Alderpersons, I urge all council to vote against hastily negotiated Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023 through 2026. This contract fails to address critical issues like the excessive force and adequate oversight through the civilian police review board. I am very concerned about how the contract has been pushed through negotiations without public input. This contract goes far beyond protecting the rights of public employees. It keeps cops from being accountable to the taxpayers who fund their salaries and community members they claim to protect. As a concerned member of the Urbana community, I ask you vote no on Resolution 2022-12-091R." And then from Yardis Olek, sorry, Olek Yardis. "Dear, hello, Aldermen. Please read my comments out loud during the council meeting. I urge all council members to vote against the hastily negotiated Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023 through 2026. This contract fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation, and civilian oversight. The deceptive negotiation tactics used by the FOP to push this through six months early shouldn't make it clear that this contract doesn't put public safety first. This contract puts the interests of the FOP ahead of public safety and shows blatant disregard for the democratic process. Given the ongoing issues with law enforcement locally and nationally, it is unacceptable to have a contract negotiated without transparency that does not address the safety issues that an unchecked police force can present to our community. As a concerned member of Urbana community, I ask that you vote no on Resolution 2022-12-091R." Okay, thank you. Before I move on, I will mention that that letter that I just wrote, we also received exactly word-for-word from Luke Lee and from Hildegard Luchin, exactly the same letter, but brought to us by those two additional constituents. And this is from Julie Watkins. "I'm writing to request that the council vote for the FOP contract remain in committee. I don't see any presentation listed such as Jaya Colacetti suggested on December 19 to explain the contract to the public, even if there is a presentation tonight that doesn't give adequate time for public commentary and questions about that presentation. I have a question for the FOP contract discussion tonight. In 2011, over 10 years ago, a side letter was attached to the FOP contract. Despite the 'notwithstanding' in quotes paragraph in the side letter, it appears the FOP wants to have it both ways. They will acknowledge the existence of a CPRB, but are insisting on an agreement on how it shall be. Much previous comment has detailed how this means a lack of accountability. Why is this acceptable? Staff should be directed to answer this question in the presentation I've already mentioned. Please keep the contract in committee. Thank you, Julie Watkins." And with that, yes, Therese?
I have one from Alan Axelrod. "This city government has drawn the attention of a statewide organization for disability rights due to repeatedly misinformed statements and contradiction of CESSA. I believe that the city is best served by factoring in changes due to CESSA in their FOP contract bargaining in a manner that is in compliance. Otherwise, in July, the city will be forced to amend their contract and department policy yet again. I further recommend that the city have a public presentation on CESSA scheduled prior to concluding contract negotiations. This can be facilitated by the CESSA Regional Advisory Committee. Lastly, I repeat that forced arbitration can be legislatively challenged. You may not feel like your word matters much to your legislators, but I can assure you it does, especially if a letter is signed by multiple Alderpersons to our legislators. You have done such a letter in the past with regards to the sheriff regarding evictions, and this letter can reasonably be expected to be acted upon. Do not limit your roles to simply just your office. You can be advocates who act in accordance with their campaign promises to our community. Sincerely, Alan."
Right. Any others? And I assume we had no presentations, so public comment is closed. And now I would entertain a motion for us to go into closed session regarding property acquisition issues presented to Five ILCS 120/2, item C, item five.
Bill moved.
Second.
We will need a roll call vote.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
The council will now move into closed session, discuss matters of property acquisition, and we will return when that is done. Thank you. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, we can have a roll call to go back into open session.
I'll make a motion that we come back into open session.
Second. Second by Chandra. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're now back in open session. Next item would be staff reports. Any staff reports?
I have an announcement that I'd like to share. You've heard about this a couple of different times, but I just want to remind people that the city of Urbana will be hosting a community engagement event to receive public feedback regarding the upcoming design and construction of new fire stations, number one and number three, or number two and number three, located on Philo Road and North Lincoln Avenue, respectively. And so this will take place on Thursday, January 12, so next week, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and it'll be in council chambers here at 400 South Vine. And it's going to be set up as an open house, so you can kind of drop in anytime between 5:30 and 7:30, and that will allow for discussion between members of the public and the project representatives, if people have questions and so forth. And in addition to just the background information on the fire station projects, there will be items on display for review and discussion, and those will include the city council's draft station programming and budget, which you've been talking about for a few months now, conceptual site plans, which include the existing and proposed alternatives, and architectural concepts. So among the things they're going to be soliciting feedback about are building materials, roof lines, and things like that. And so representatives from the city and the selected design firm, FGM Architects, will be present to answer questions about the project and to collect public feedback. So just want to encourage people to come if they're interested.
What time is that again?
5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday, January 12.
Is there a way for people to, I don't know, submit written feedback, like, or is the feedback just verbal at the event?
No, I think they're going to have some kind of writing opportunity. You don't have to just stand there and no one's, there'll be an opportunity for you to put things in writing if you want.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Marlin?
Couple of other announcements. I have a message from Sanford Hess, our IT head. He said last week, he wanted folks to know that we replaced the audio equipment here in council chambers. in council chambers to improve the sound during meetings in the council room and on UPTV. As part of the setup, audio levels for each microphone were set at an initial volume. Because one component of the setup is backordered, because of course, you never get everything at once, it's backordered until April, we can't adjust individual levels during tonight's meeting. But tomorrow, staff will listen to the recording of tonight's meeting, and they'll adjust individual microphones as needed. We're also excited to have a better listening experience, and again, ask for patience as we figure out the right settings on the new equipment. I also wanted to let people know that the phone connection, both calling into the meeting and outgoing sound is much improved as well, so it will be easier for people to call into the meeting. And we've replaced the microphones on the speakers table and added mics to staff tables on either side, so if we need extra microphones, those are available as well. So much of the technical equipment has been replaced and updated. We're just waiting for that last piece. And I will try to answer that.
I just, just a quick question. I, I was curious if there are any wireless microphones or a way that sometimes we have a row of people up there, if we could have a third microphone?
Those are my, those are wireless back there, so they-
So we can just move those over if we need to?
Have a total of four up here if necessary.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good question.
That's also good news.
Happy to be able to answer that one. Another announcement is today, I was very happy to swear in five new police officers this afternoon. These included four new recruits and then one person transferring from another department. So the new recruits will go into the Police Training Institute beginning next Monday.
Quick question on that. How many open positions does that leave us, including the chief?
Well, there's the chief. I don't have that figure. I do know we had two people leaving recently, so this is a, this particular group is a net of three on that, but that, we still are not up at full staffing levels, even with these five new ones. But it certainly brings us closer to getting our staffing levels back up to where they need to be. And then lastly, back to ARPA, we, just a reminder that the questions that you've submitted to the applicants have been sent to the applicants, and Will is in the process of collecting responses. And a reminder that we'd like you to have your bucket lists ready. We changed it to January 9th. That'll give you the weekend rather than, I think we had said the 6th originally. So just a reminder, the buckets are full funding, recommended for partial funding, maybe, and no's. And that'll be the first point that discussion will take off from, and we hope to plan for a discussion regarding the buckets on Tuesday, January 17th, which is the council, uh, committee meeting after Martin Luther King Day.
All right, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, item number one is Resolution Number 2022-12-091R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement. I, I thought we were going to have a motion on this, so with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 70, term of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, Mayor Marlin?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would ask that this be kept in committee, to be considered no earlier than January 17th, 2023. There will be a presentation at that time. We received questions from city council yesterday evening that staff want to prepare the answers to, and we've got some meetings I'll be scheduling with community stakeholders this week. So, so we would ask that this be kept in committee and that the discussion be carried over till then.
I do want to point out that one of our pieces of public input was an opportunity to, for public to react to the public presentation or comment on it, so that would make the 17th kind of hard if they, depending on how that is scheduled and whether people have to react to that in, in the moment. So I, I will entertain a motion at this point to keep this in committee.
I will move that we keep Resolution Number 2022-12091, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 70, term of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, to be on the committee of the whole meeting no earlier than January 17th.
And that gives, and that gives us the flexibility if we need to make some adjustments.
All right.
Second.
Jay, a second, thank you. Any discussion about this? Grace.
Thanks. I appreciate keeping this in committee. I agree with having more time to kind of digest and thoroughly, thoroughly understand all of the ins and outs of the bargaining rules and process. I appreciate that the public has come and spoke on this and for their engagement and reading through the contract. I definitely hear that, and I think for me, we're trying to figure out what things are tied to the contract and what things are part of city policy and how to navigate those things to make some of the changes that we'd like to see. I do think, as I've said before, that we are very limited by things like the CPRB side letter and limitations, and I agree, it seems like that's absolutely not something that we have to bargain on. That's absolutely inherent management rights of the city. So I look forward to more discussions and trying to figure out how all of this process works and the ins and outs of what are we allowed to do and what are the consequences of our actions on this. And so I look forward to that and again, appreciate the public for their input and engagement. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm grateful to hear that the presentation is being scheduled. I think that talking about the process, talking about what the process in general looks like and what it's looked like specifically for this contract is going to be really important and helpful in getting that clarification for folks who are confused about where things are, as we're, we're talking about potential ordinance changes as well, and which pieces belong in a contract and which pieces are to be addressed elsewhere. And I think it is really important for the public to know that this is one piece of a larger conversation, and, and I'm glad to see that we're going to have more of that clarification coming shortly.
Thank you. Any others? Mary Alice, would you take the chair for a second?
Sure, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate us keeping this in committee. I, I was not prepared to vote on this. I think we needed more time. In fact, I was feeling like we might need more than two weeks, that we might need four weeks, but I appreciate the way that the motion was constructed so that we can have some flexibility. I, I do think that there is information that we need to get out to the public about the, the process and maybe the constraints of the circumstances and things that I know it's helpful to have explained to me each time I have to go through it, though I've seen it several times. So I, I appreciate what we're doing tonight and assure the public that the conversation will be continuing, and we need to hear what they have to say about it.
Do you want to chair back?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I relinquish the chair, back to James.
All right, so we are ready to vote on the motion to move this to no sooner than the next committee of the whole. I believe that's a voice vote, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. We can move on to number two, ordinance number 2022-12-054, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Best of Africa Food Store LLC, 208 West Griggs Street, Urbana, Illinois. And we, do we have a proposal, a presentation on this? Mayor Marlin?
Yes, per the memo, this would provide a Class R and T-1 liquor license for Best of Africa Food Store to operate Mama's African Kitchen, which is located at 208 West Griggs Street. This particular class of license, R and T-1, would allow them to sell beer, wine, and hard liquor. They also currently hold a Class P packaged liquor license for the grocery store. And the two licenses are for separate defined spaces, and it's possible that they will be turning in their package liquor license once they get this other license and then just be selling alcohol at the restaurant. And I do want to preface this particular license with a reminder, and this is as much for us as a council and the public, and that is a reminder that a liquor license is a privilege, it's not a right, and we count on licensees to comply with state liquor law and our local liquor code. We rewrote our Chapter 3 liquor code to be very clear so that licensees and the businesses operating under the code would be able to understand it. And it lays out very clearly the rights and responsibilities of both the city and the licensee. And building code officials, our fire safety regulations are written and enforced for reason, and that's public safety and putting public safety first and foremost. And we do our best to enforce consistently, we treat all license holders equally, and we certainly support new businesses as well as longstanding liquor license holders. But these licenses again are a privilege and not a right, and we expect licensees and license holders to follow state law and our local liquor codes. And that's the premise behind every single license that's issued in the city. So with that, it would increase, this ordinance would increase R and T licenses to 15 in the City of Urbana.
Are there any questions? Could I have a motion? Okay, Chandra, what's your question?
So to clarify, that you, you think that they would give up their package liquor license for the, what is it like?
It's possible, yeah. That's been proposed.
And so the, the packages in the grocery store, like, they're just selling bottles and cans or six-packs or whatever, and then, but instead with the, the restaurant, they want to pour, serve alcohol?
Yes, mix and pour drinks. And because they're two separate licenses for very two distinct purposes, two different types of even containers, you, you have to keep them separate. For example, they can't go to the groceries, they couldn't go to the grocery store and pull a six-pack off the shelf and take it into the restaurant and use it. That is illegal under state code. So in order to make that very clear and keep it separate, the, the licensees themselves have suggested that if they get this license, they'll just not be selling alcohol in the grocery store.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, they're going to have to be very careful about not intermixing the two, because they're literally, you know, they walk through a door and then they're in the, they're, they walk from the grocery store into the restaurant.
And what are the hours of the restaurant? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But they're on Facebook, you can check there.
Could I have a motion then?
Ordinance Number 2022-12054, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3 hyphen 43, increasing the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Best Africa Food Store LLC at 208 West Griggs Street, Urbana, Illinois, City Council on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, seconded by Sharice. Any further discussion? Could I have a roll call vote for this ordinance, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. And next up is Resolution Number 2022-12-092R, resolution approving an amended and restated right-of-way license agreement with MCDJ LLC, 208 West Griggs Street, and Carol will present.
Good evening. I'm making this presentation on behalf of John Zeeman, so I hope I don't disappoint him with my efforts. So I don't have slides, I just wanted to put up one slide that is an exhibit to the council memo, just so you have a depiction of what, what's the subject of the license agreement. And this is a companion piece to the liquor license, because the changes that are being made are for the benefit of Best of Africa slash Mama's African Kitchen. So as you look at this aerial, on the left-hand side, most of the left, well, the, the right-hand side is 25 o'clock, and then most of the left-hand side is the grocery store and the restaurant. So there, the green and blue spaces have been covered under an existing license agreement that was originally cast in 2016, and then it was expanded in 2018. And now we are restating the entire agreement and adding the areas in red. So the areas in red along Griggs Street are for the benefit of both the grocery store and the restaurant, and the areas to the, to the north are 16 parking spaces that are going to be leased, and there's a different rate associated with each one. If you rent parking spaces, then the, the rate is a per-space number, and if you rent right-of-way, that's in the schedule of fees at 85 cents a square foot. So they will be using the areas for parking, certainly to the north, but also for entryways and patios and awnings and a variety of things, not unlike what they've done previously with the areas that are under license. Before they can do any work in these areas, though, they still have to get a right-of-way permit, and they have not done that yet, and we've only seen concepts so far. So they have to also maintain an ADA clearance for pedestrians along the north side of Griggs Street, and in building out what is part of the existing agreement already, they built out all the way to the right-of-way of Griggs Street, which is actually in violation of the license agreement, so they will be held to the limitation that they have to be five feet back from the curb as, for any build-out that they do going forward. So, and they will be responsible for ensuring that there's proper signage on the parking spaces, and any enforcement of their exclusive use of those spaces is their responsibility, not the city's. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the nature of the agreement before you.
Mary Alice?
So you had mentioned that they're not in compliance at the moment. Are they going to fix that, resolve that situation?
I don't believe so. I think there's, I think there's a physical investment that's been made, and we're, and we're not requiring them to remove it, but we are going to be more, what do I want to say, circumspect about monitoring what they put in place on any additional build-out that they do.
So which piece are they not in compliance with right now?
They are currently within the patio that's in front of 25 o'clock, so I think that's in the blue area, the 45 by 10-foot area covered by the, the original license. That is built to the back of the curb, and it was supposed to be five feet off the back of the curb.
And what about the, the east side of the building?
That's in compliance, as far as I know.
All right. And it's, have they been upkeeping the area? I mean, granted, it's only been like, what, I guess nine years since we're in 2023, since the original, for, no, sorry, seven years. Have they been, have they been keeping up these spaces?
As, I, I'm unaware of any complaints about, about that.
Okay. Are there any designs when they do these renovations to do any updates to the other areas?
I don't believe so, but we haven't, we, we, they haven't submitted a, a right-of-way permit, so I, I can't answer that. They, they have, we've only seen concepts, and the concepts don't, and, the concepts that I have seen do not make any changes to the existing areas.
And are there, does the city have the ability to have the final approval of what is there, what is placed there?
Yes, it's still in the right-of-way.
Okay.
We, it's, and that's what the right-of-way permit is for. They have to present what they intend to do, and then we approve it, and then they can undertake construction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chris? Carol, you might not know, but do you expect the red area in front of the African grocery store on the north, south side likely to be an awning and outdoor dining space?
I think it's intended to be outdoor dining. I don't know if there will be an awning or not.
Yeah, okay.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation on here. Could you clarify, what entity is MCDJ? Is that who owns the building?
Yes. Yes.
Because there's multiple businesses there, right? Like, we're talking like this is Best of Africa or the restaurant?
Right.
Or 25 o'clock, but really, this LLC is the building owner, not any of these businesses, correct?
That's correct. MCDJ LLC is the owner of 208 West Griggs Street, and it's leased to, the spaces inside are leased to two entities. One is 25 o'clock, and then the other is this combination of Best of Africa Grocery Store and Mama's African Kitchen.
And this is a term of twenty years, is that correct?
I think that's right. There are, let's see, as a license agreement, I think there's a... Right-of, yeah, let's see. On page three of nine, Section Two, this agreement is binding upon the parties here, too, for a term of twenty years, and so on and so forth. Either party may terminate this agreement for cause by giving written notice to the other party at least forty-five days prior to the proposed termination.
And then, as far as the fee structure, I thought you mentioned something tonight about a cost per space, but I've seen here just a flat annual fee.
It's based on a cost, it's based on a cost per space of...
Of those sixteen spaces.
Three hundred and sixty dollars per parking space times sixteen parking spaces plus eighty-five cents per square foot for, multiplied by two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight square feet.
So that this annual fee includes those sixteen parking spaces that they plan to keep for parking, for reserved parking, or whatever they want to do with it?
I believe they plan to keep it for parking.
Okay. And I'm just not familiar with license, these kinds of things. It struck me as strange that there was things that would survive the termination of the agreement. I didn't know if you had any clarification or insight on that?
So if they're, just say, for instance, and I'm going to just say right now, I'm not a lawyer, but I've spent enough time with them, I'm going to, I'm going to give an example, which is, say there was an issue about liability, and the issue came up, and it was a year out from the expiration of the license agreement. And then, you know, liability cases can take a long time to adjudicate and so forth. Just because if they bore the liability, if the licensee bore the liability during the term of the license, the license terminates, but a liability issue arose while they had the license in force, just because the license has terminated, it doesn't, their responsibility doesn't evaporate. That's one example.
And then, is it typical, this would be just a flat rate that doesn't increase over those twenty years?
I don't think we have an escalation rate built into our fee schedule, but maybe we should.
It just strikes me as a long time, for twenty years.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, Chandra?
Is twenty years standard, or is just, was the last agreement, was that twenty years, or you said twenty years?
That's a good question. I can get you the answer. I just don't have it off the top of my head. I can send that.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
Is it common for the building owners to rent space instead of the business owners? Because they're going to then charge a fee to the business owners to use the parking space.
You know, I don't know if it relates to, I don't know if we have any requirements in our, the legalities that pertain, that says that we can only have a license agreement with a property owner, because sometimes it requires that the property owner, you know, it can't just be some random person who wants sixteen parking spaces in that location. So I think it might need to be tied to the property owner. That's a question I can ask Dave Westner and get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I was, I just wanted to clarify that the right-of-way permit is a separate item that's built on top of the license agreement, right? The permit...
That's correct.
Can be revoked, even though the license agreement is still in place for reasons that the permit, they haven't met the responsibilities of the permit?
That's true.
Okay. But the right-of-way has to be there for the permit to be issued?
The license has to be there for the right-of-way, for them to do work in the right-of-way.
There has to be that structure for the permit to exist on. Okay, thank you. Could I have, do you have questions, Chandra?
I got another question.
Another question, Grace? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to check if this was right on page five of the contract, nine A five, or, nope, 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 sorry. So, yeah, still page five, but F, the provisions in Section Seven will survive the termination of this agreement, and is Section Seven maintenance? Is that correct? Is it saying that they are responsible for maintaining this right-of-way after this agreement is over?
If that's a detailed question, come back to, that's fine, too. I think I might have other ones like that.
I think that is a, I think that's a correction that needs to be made. You'll see that it says the provisions of this Section Seven will survive, and this is Section Eight. So I think you just found a typo. So it's about repair and restoration. So I think that should actually read the provisions of this Section Eight.
Eight, okay. And another questionable one on that same page, nine A five, Section Nine, if you just want to double-check if that's also correct, or if the numbers were off on something. That was all. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll double-check that, but thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Chandra, I think we're ready for the motion.
Make a motion. I move approval of Resolution Number 2022-12-092R, resolution approving an amended and restated right-of-way license agreement with MCDJ LLC, 208 West Griggs Street, to council on the regular agenda, since there's outstanding questions.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. We can move on to new business, which is ordinance number 2023-01-001, an ordinance authorizing an office lease for the Cohen Building, 136 West Main Street. Who is presenting?
I am, but I'm going to do it from up here, because I don't have any slides. So you have before you a lease for the Cohen Building at 136 West Main, as was just, as was just announced, and this lease has been negotiated to implement the budget amendment that you all approved, allowing us to expand the staffing in the Human Resources Division, and to relocate that division out of the city building temporarily, because we don't have the ability to absorb the additional staffing in the city building. And the terms are as outlined in the memo and in the lease, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Grace?
Thanks. If we could just clarify some questions maybe previously asked, just make sure we've got the correct understanding here, that this lease for seven years is something that we're confident that the city will need for at least seven years?
It will, it lines up, that timing lines up with the plan that we have been implementing of the master facilities plan, and as a part of that plan, several years out, is an expansion of this building that would make some more significant changes than the ones we're going through now in the lobby, and add office space here. And if we keep on the schedule that, for implementation, that was in the master facilities plan, this timing makes sense, but we've built in an option for a three-year extension if we get off track.
Thank you. And also just clarifying that we recently passed a budget amendment for forty-five thousand or so for six months of space, so this is within kind of what we had expected to increase in the budget?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, could I have a motion?
I'll move for Resolution Number 2022-12-092R, resolution, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. Ordinance, ordinance number 2023-01-001, an ordinance authorizing an office lease, Cohen Building, 136 West Main Street, to be moved to City Council for approval on regular agenda.
All right, thank you. Seconded by Chandra. It's the first ordinance born in 2023, just to point out. Any discussion? Yes, Grace?
Thanks. Just a quick one that I hope that we, as the city, can take advantage of the discount for paying upfront annually, so I hope that whoever financing it, since it comes out of the budget annually, I imagine if we can be sure to do that instead of monthly, to help save on some of those costs. Thanks.
Any other discussion? So we need a roll call vote for this. I have a roll call, please.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a discussion regarding the prioritization planning for division projects and community development.
Greetings. Okay, so, the Planning Division is considering several projects as we develop our work plan for 2023. We feel that we can reasonably undertake just one new project at this time, so we've narrowed our list down to two immediate projects that we would like to discuss in detail. One is addressing short-term rentals, like Airbnbs and VRBOs and all the other acronyms and things that do short-term rentals online. And then, the other is changing zoning regulations in the B3U, General Business University District, to encourage development that more closely matches the district's intent. So we seek council's support to focus on the B3U District as our next project, and we feel that it is, it's a logical outgrowth of the work that we, that staff and the community invested into our recent R7 zoning update last year. We feel that it's the most urgent of all the projects we've been considering right now as well. So I'm going to summarize the two, sort of these two main projects that are under consideration, and then I'll briefly describe a few of the other ones that are, that are things we've sort of discussed but don't feel are extremely urgent at this time. So the first project is to add specific zoning rules for short-term rentals, so again, that's Airbnb, VRBO, and the like. So back in 2014, when the prior, when a prior zoning administrator was first asked how to address short-term rentals, they decided to treat these like traditional bed and breakfast, which our zoning ordinance has rules on. So for the sake of consistency, we've continued that practice to the present. This approach works to an extent, but true compliance is onerous for the owners, and it's also difficult to enforce from a zoning, zoning enforcement perspective when violations are brought to our attention. And we don't receive all that many complaints about short-term rentals, but we feel that's not because of the zoning ordinance, but really in spite of it. So we feel it would be beneficial to develop clear, specific rules for short-term rentals to fill a gap in our zoning ordinance, and establishing such rules would make things better for, really for the people renting the places, neighbors, and staff as well. We think this project would take a fair amount of staff time, probably require quite a bit of community engagement, just doing research on the effort that it takes other communities to address short-term rentals. It would be a bit of a lift, but again, it would fill a known gap in the zoning ordinance. The second project we are proposing is to change zoning regulations in the B3U zoning district to match the intent of the district. Similar to short-term rentals, this one's also kind of been in discussion and been in the hopper since I arrived here in 2014. We feel that it's more urgent now than at any time since I've been with the city. So the B3U is intended to provide a range of business and office uses close to the university, and to provide high-density residential uses to ensure an adequate supply of housing for people who desire to live near the campus. I believe I pulled that verbatim from the zoning ordinance. So I'm going to pull up, I'm doing one better than Carol by doubling the amount of slides that she had. Oh, come on, where's the, okay, I guess I got to click this. Okay. So as you can see on your screens, so the B3U District is, so on the east side, there is Lincoln Avenue. The B3U District is right in the center of the screen. Let me just establish that. It's the periwinkle color. It is all on the west side of Lincoln Avenue. There are a handful, I think, if I count right, there's probably about ten properties that are west of Harvey Street that are owned by the university, but the vast majority sort of in the center, just shaped, I don't know, like a butcher knife or something like that, that, a cleaver, there you go, yeah, because butcher knives are the small ones. I'm not a knife expert, as you can tell. Okay, but most of those, those are all privately owned in the middle there. And so we have, we've had some, I'll just go to the next slide here. So one of these, sort of, it's kind of odd-shaped, but somebody's put together an agglomeration of half a block along Main Street, as well as a couple of adjacent properties that they're actively marketing for redevelopment, so these are all cleared, everything is demoed off them. They're actively marketing this. We'd like to make sure that what they put up is, you know, more in line with the intent of the district and with what folks might want to see there. Also, I wanted to discuss a couple of, a couple of other projects. So if you'll recall, a while back, there was, at 1009 West Stoughton Street, there was somebody wanting to build a new apartment building, and they were asking for a variance. And that one sort of went away, and council didn't hear about it again. That's because the developer found a bit of our zoning ordinance that allows you to lease parking spaces from nearby, from nearby parking lots that have excess capacity, if you're not located with, within six hundred feet of an R1, R2, or I believe R3 district. So that property just happened to be about seven hundred feet away from the nearest district, so they were able to lease space from themselves across the street, because they had excess parking, so they didn't need a variance. That can be kind of cumbersome, because over time, you can tie up different properties with all of these parking agreements, and then that can be problematic down the line. But in that case, they were allowed to do it, it was just one parking space, that's probably not a big deal. We did receive an inquiry, we received some preliminary plans from somebody else who wants to redevelop a property in this district, and they were looking to lease seventy-five percent of their spaces off-site, because they also own nearby, nearby parking. Now, in that case, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna explain the case a little bit, because I ran the numbers. So they're proposing to do, essentially, other than the parking requirements, they're proposing to do something buy-right, so it meets floor area ratio, meets minimum setback, meets open space ratio. So it meets floor area ratio, meets minimum setback, meets open space ratio, there is no height restriction in the district, but that's effectively limited by those other things, by floor area, open space, and setbacks. But even though they were maximizing what they were allowed to do, under the current development regulations, in terms of the physical regulations, there is still seventy-five percent short on the parking that was allowed. So if nothing else, the parking restrictions in the district aren't lining up with what we think the development regulations of the district should allow somebody to do. Now, to add some nuance, in, so we don't, we don't count structured parking against floor area ratio. So this developer could meet the requirements by building three more stories of parking, and it would still then qualify. Now, I don't know anybody who wants to see four stories of parking with, I think it would be seven, seven floors of a building on top of it. I don't think that's the intent of the district, I don't think that's what people want to see, but that's what the development regulations are telling people they have to do. Since we want to, we have some bonuses in the B-three-U District as well. One of them says if you have structured or underground parking, your floor area ratio can be increased by twenty-five percent. So actually, in the case I just described, they could tap into that bonus, build another floor onto it, and would probably have to build another floor of parking as well. So all that is to say, that's a real-life example that, of somebody who wants to redevelop in the area. I'm not saying they wanted to build that tall, I'm saying to meet our development regulations, they would have to build a lot taller, and mostly parking. We can discuss all of that in much more detail if we pursue this project, but I did want to bring that because I thought it was pretty poignant on how, sort of how complicated zoning can be, and especially in the B-three-U District, how complicated it can get. And in this case, it was, if you tapped into a bonus provision that we would think would make a project better, you'd actually end up having more, you know, a taller building with more parking, which I don't think people really want to see. Okay, that was my sidebar. So I hope I've proved this following point, that the development regulations of the district do not align with the intent of the district. So changing the development regulations to make the B-three-U District more attractive for the higher-density type of development that's intended for the district, that being sort of mixed use, you know, office, business, and residential uses. Those, making it more attractive to those types of development could increase our tax base and help remove pressure to develop, to redevelop properties on the east side of Lincoln Avenue in the Wester Benin neighborhood, which I'm not sure if you've all heard, but people don't want that. This project would take a fair amount of time as well, and we think we'd want to do extensive public outreach, there's a lot of research we'd, or a lot of, you know, a lot of things on the staff side we would need to do as well, but again, that could lead to reinvestment and an increase in taxes in an area that is meant for higher-density mixed-use development. We feel the urgency of this project is high, because you're looking at a site on your screen right now that is vacant and ready for redevelopment. It represents roughly five percent of all of the B-three-U District. So the urgency is high. I also wanted to, I just wanted to go over a few of the other potential projects, these are in your memo, I didn't include any details about each of these.
Kevin?
Yes.
You said you had a second page.
This is the second page, yeah, the first page was this, and then, yeah.
I was looking for the clea, I thought it was a zoom, thank you.
Yeah, it was, okay. But I'll go back to the first page.
Interior, the cleaver, right?
Yeah, so you can see, you can see the full cleaver instead of, yeah, okay, whoops, no, now I messed it up. Okay, there we go. I'll leave my hands off the keyboard. There are other projects we've sort of been kicking around, we can discuss them a little bit if you'd like. I said in my memo that I'd discuss each of these briefly, I'll try to be very brief. So one is to eliminate permit requirements for most home-based businesses. Right now, we, if you read the letter of the zoning ordinance, it essentially says that even if you're working from home, you, just working on a computer at home, you need to get a permit from the city to do that. That seems a little over the top. We feel like there's some simple changes that could be made to encourage people to do more, more home-based and non-traditional businesses in a way that wouldn't be nuisances to the neighbors. Another one is to establish zoning rules for data centers. So these are standalone, sort of clusters of servers that, they can be a nuisance because they can make a lot of noise. Most places don't have zoning rules for them because they're relatively new use. We, our Plan Commission recommended we establish some rules for them because we had a, we had a case that was solar with an associated data center. And a lot of that case, you know, a lot of the discussion ends up around the data centers, since those are the ones that are louder and can cause nuisances. So we do feel like we should tackle that soon, but probably not right now. Another is establishing zoning rules for blood plasma centers. Where should they be allowed by right? Should they require a special use permit wherever they go? We'd just like to have some rules for that so we can be clear next time somebody comes in with one of those. Another is to develop downtown design guidelines. I know we didn't talk about these during any of the sort of one-on-one meetings that we had with council members, but this is one that's also been kind of, staff did some work on it way back in twenty-fifteen. I believe it may have been a council goal even back then, but with, so it's something we might want to pursue, but I'd probably want to see it as an outgrowth of the Public Realm study that we're doing downtown, because often your public realm is only as good as the building is fronting onto it. And right now, we have no rules for design downtown, so if somebody wanted to build something that detracted from the public realm instead of enhanced it, they could, as long as they met our zoning requirements. So that one's, I'd say it's pretty important, it would take a fair amount of staff time. The urgency is somewhere in the middle. And then a couple more. So during our one-on-one meetings, there was a suggestion to look into zoning rules for urban agriculture. I think this could come as, this might come as an outgrowth of the comprehensive plan as well. And then a couple more that might come out of the comprehensive plan is sort of zoning to address affordable housing, just housing supply in general. And then also zoning changes to promote walkability. I think you could do that by things like removing minimum parking requirements, so not forcing parking everywhere actually helps with walkability. So that kind of concludes my speaking part. I would like to discuss these projects and get some direction from council. Again, staff would suggest we undertake the B-three-U changes at this time.
All right, questions, Chris?
Yeah, Kevin, about the B-three-U, now, we know that if this was east of Lincoln Avenue, we'd be kicking a hornet's nest like we did with the R-seven. So is it currently, right now, mostly students in that area for right now, do we know?
It is, I think there's one person that still owns their own house over there.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure the rest of it is student-related apartments.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, anticipating from last year's discussion, which is no taverns, no liquor stores, no, you know, massage parlors, no, you know, crazy, you know, so we're gonna kind of keep to that when we say mixed use, right? I mean, probably, or not.
Well, we haven't really considered the, addressing the uses in the district, because I think the uses, for the most part, are pretty consistent with the intent of the district. I'm just pulling up my zoning description sheet to see, you know, to see what kind of businesses are allowed. Yeah, so currently taverns are allowed, liquor stores are allowed, all, these are all buy-right. So it's, I mean, it's sort of like your general business, so like what would be allowed along University Avenue or Cunningham, but it's supposed to be focused on university and folks who are associated with the university. Sure, we could have those discussions, but I'm not sure that matches the intent of the district.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
Thanks, Kevin, for going over these, and then for also meeting with council members about, I agree with the priorities. I think that it's important for us to get a handle on some of the stuff that's going on east of Lincoln. I did have a question, I was under the impression, but I could be completely wrong, the area over there, just south of Cranert, I thought part of that, was that just B-three or is that B-three-U?
It's a mix, like many of our, like much of our zoning ordinance, there is no B-three-U down there, though, it is CCD, which is our other zoning district meant for campus, it stands for Campus Commercial District. So similar in what it's intended to do.
Okay, all right. You know, and then my other really short question is, it seems like we, it might be an easy lift for us to at least make it legal for people to work remotely at their own home, is that something that we could just easily update, or is that?
I do.
So can we, is that possible to throw that on to the?
Well, I was hoping that I could promise little and deliver a lot. It was our, it was my intent to do that over the course of a couple days and then just run it through Plan Commission and bring it to y'all, so, yes.
All right, Therese?
I guess what I need is a more specific type of definition of the intent of the B-three-U. If you could just give me?
Yeah, I can, I can read it, I'll read it verbatim to you. So it says, "The B-three-U General Business University District is intended to provide areas in proximity to the University of Illinois for a range of business and office uses to meet the needs of persons and businesses associated with the university. This district is also intended to provide areas for high-density residential uses to ensure an adequate supply of housing for persons who desire to reside near the campus. These business and residential uses may occur as mixed use in the same structure. The development regulations in this district are intended to allow buildings which are compatible with the size and scale of the university's buildings."
And we want to change it too?
Well, I don't want to change the intent of the district, I think the intent, the intent makes sense, I just don't think the development regulations really are giving us what?
So you want to change the development regulations to be more in, to coincide more with what the intent of B-three-U is?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to try to get that straight. So I guess my other question is regarding the mixed use, and you said that the B-three-U allows for taverns, coffee houses, I guess, study spaces or office, and office space, and so on and so forth. And we have, there's some, is there anyone interested in that develop, that area that's vacant for developing?
I'm not sure, I'm not the broker.
Okay, I'm just asking that because you showed us that one area that you said is totally vacant?
Right, they, yeah, they demoed that within the past year.
Okay, so there's no buildings on the properties?
Correct.
So anybody that has a business idea or wants to build a new apartment building can, that space is open for those purposes?
Yes.
And so changing the regulations would change things like parking and area floor hoozits, and that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to try to, I just want to get a better understanding of how, of more specifics, I saw, thank you.
Right, well, and another, since you kind of brought up development regulations, so one thing we've found, and I know they found it in Champaign before they changed some rules on it, is if you require a minimum amount of open space, it sounds like a good idea, but what you get, and I think you can, you can see them here, I'll zoom in a little bit, but what you get are apartment buildings with big open spaces in the middle, which count for it, which count towards the open space, which nobody really uses, and it's just sort of a waste. So it's, so it's not just that, I think parking is a big one, but it's not just that, it's open space, it's also, we require, you know, it might work, if you want to make a more walkable neighborhood, you might not want to have your building set back fifteen feet, or it might only be ten feet, but, you know, just allowing buildings closer, you know, closer to the sidewalk might make it more walkable, but these are things we'd look into.
My other question, because you were talking about parking, since you brought this up before I stopped, so we don't have underground parking in Havana?
We do.
I was going to ask if that was allowed, or if, and if that was something, a regulation that could be changed, because you were talking about, you know, stacking parking on, as a hypothetical.
Right.
You know, parking in the buildings, I'm like, no underground parking?
Well, it's my understanding that while above-ground structured parking is ridiculously expensive, having to then dig under the ground and put in structured parking is ridiculously expensive, plus.
I don't know, I, you know, I lived in an area that had a lot of underground parking, so I thought I'd just ask about that option, okay.
And there is, I think the only building that has been redeveloped in the past, or been developed in B-three-U in the past, probably ten years or more, is down here, you can see it right here on Western Avenue and Lincoln. And they did put in underground parking. I don't know what the rents are there. It's a really nice-looking building, and they did manage to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chandra?
So what would it look like to eliminate parking requirements citywide? Like, is that something that's possible? Because it seems like it's a kind of a obstacle for some developers to have, like if they want, I don't know, ten units, they've got to have twenty-five parking spaces when in actuality, twenty-five people are not going to have cars or whatever. So if we have parking requirements that are not being utilized, and we're a society that's sort of moving away from a focus of all cars, is it possible for us to start dialing back parking requirements?
I think it's possible for us to start dialing them back. I feel like once we come out with the comprehensive plan, we can, or we could probably build that into the comprehensive plan, is that policy direction that says we want more, say, walkable, less auto-oriented, however we want to phrase it. I don't like either of those word, like phrases, but we'll figure it out. We could add it in there, and then we could have the policy sort of cover to then go and say, okay, are we going to eliminate parking requirements citywide? Are we going to keep them some places? But I think in practice, what it would look like is that in areas, so in areas like this that are closer to campus, or that are closer to places that are sort of more walkable, you'd see less onsite parking. Places that are further afield would probably have the same amount of parking that we already require of them. It's just different, but sort of now, we're kind of mandating that everywhere looks like an apartment out, you know, by I-74.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you for this and for explaining all this, I think your prioritization makes a lot of sense. Didn't we talk about auxiliary dwelling units as well, though, is that still on the list?
We did, and I think I, I think I came clean and said I didn't like the language I was using about those, so I just described it as zoning to address affordable housing.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was falling under that, I've had some constituents reach out who are really eager to see progress on that, so I just wanted to make sure it was still on the list, thank you.
And I think that's, so I see accessory dwelling units, so like your garage apartment buildings or your... apartment buildings or your basement apartment or what have you. I see those as one of many tools we can use to address housing supply in general, which I think simply increasing housing supply and especially doing things like that probably will lead to more affordability in some way, but I do want to tackle affordable housing in sort of a broader way, because I don't think it's just about housing supply.
Thanks, that makes sense.
Grace.
Thanks also for the presentation and including us in some of this planning process. I agree with the prioritization of the B3U, kind of readdressing some of the development requirements. I think it's hard because they're all important things that probably need to get done eventually. For me, I would even add some other things before short-term rentals of Airbnb stuff. The home-based business requirements, I think would be, sounds like an easy one I would agree with. And then in Jia's comments and questions there about the affordable housing and accessory structures, that seems to me to be one of even more kind of urgency and importance than the short-term rentals, which are already kind of operating under a system that at least kind of works, right? I think I agree, it's hard because they could all need to be done, but I think that's an even more urgent one for impacting people. And then for the rules of data centers and plasma centers, I again agree, those are important to get to eventually. And I wonder if you could explain a little bit more about how they've been handled or how they will be handled in the future? As you said, if there's a data center or plasma center that's looking for development, in the past, my understanding is that you all have kind of picked the closest category, and then if it needs a special use permit, that's how it comes up? Is that still the case?
Yes, that's, that's how, that's how we function. The zoning ordinance says if a use isn't listed in the table of uses, you need to find the closest use and apply the rules to that. So in the past, with data centers, we haven't had any standalone data centers, but when, when we've had discussions about it, we would treat them like electrical substations, which isn't, which I don't think is great, and I think Plan Commission had some, some concerns about treating them like that. So luckily, we haven't had to deal with them yet, but that is the, the closest use we've identified. For plasma centers, we've treated them like medical clinics, which they may be like that, but they also, I think there's an argument to treat them more just like a regular, sort of like a regular office use as well. So I think there's arguments on kind of both sides of that. When we've had to, we, we've gone on the side of treating them as medical clinics. And so there have been two, the one up on Lincoln Avenue, applied for and they received a special use permit for that, and then of course, the one downtown that you all saw that was eventually withdrawn, that was being treated as a medical clinic.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate bringing a lot of these issues to our attention and having us give some input on prioritizing. Again, I agree with those kind of top ones in priority, and then also, you know, the background, bigger picture stuff of, as you mentioned, things like urban agriculture and future land use and things that I imagine will be very interdepartmental maybe. I was thinking back to some conversations about economic development areas that I imagine is crossover with that economic development department also, but about the way things are zoned and that Stone Creek area is still listed as an area that we need to incentivize economic development for being underdeveloped, and I think there's a lot of things that we could also revisit with just general land use and planning and intentional zoning that matches the uses. So, yeah, I appreciate all of the work that you all have in this department and helping us to prioritize the few to focus on immediately.
Thank you.
Chandra.
The downtown design guideline, you have three stars for staff time. With the Rome study, would that help minimize any staff time if it's sort of rolled up into that and asked if like some sort of basic guidelines could be provided by, through that study?
I think that's beyond the scope of that study.
Okay.
But I, I do think it would make sense to, to add, just as sort of an implementation recommendation in that study, saying you should have some design guidelines downtown.
Okay, because I, if we're making moves to revitalize and gear up downtown again, I think having those design guidelines in place so that when new businesses or whatever wants to come in and have a sort of a guideline on how things should look, which is very surprising because I thought we did, but maybe that's like the historic guidelines things that I'm thinking of.
Well, we, we have a few design districts and they're kind of spread out. None of them touch downtown. We do have a National Register of Historic Places district downtown, but those districts don't come with any guidelines. They give you the ability to apply for certain federal tax credits if you rehab your building in ways that meet their criteria.
I see.
So it's an incentive, but also if you have a building on the National Register or in a National Register district, you can demolish it with no repercussions, so, and, and you could deface it and, you know. I'm sure that's happened plenty as well.
Thank you.
I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
That's, I, I've asked myself the same question. I believe, it was before my time, but I believe the CCD was created to, so that, that whole Gregory Place development could happen, so I think it was kind of a bespoke district that was tailor-made to whatever the university wanted to do there. So the differences, I don't know, I, I don't know the differences off the top of my head.
It's done there. It could all be reviewed.
Right. I, I am in favor, I am in favor of combining, consolidating, minimizing districts as much as possible and also making them make sense. That's also key.
Yeah, I always, I would just-
Yeah.
The other question we have is-
Sorry, no, I must have hit the button again. The, the thing, the thing about the Airbnb and VRBO is not that I feel like there's urgency from the standpoint of that's something we need to serve. My question is, how widespread? It feels like something that might actually impact more of Urbana than this very focused meat cleaver that we have that we're talking about with the B3U. So do we have a sense of, do we have Airbnb and VRBO going on throughout the city? And though, so if we address this, we affect like all of the city as opposed to this very specific place?
Right. Well, I, I try not to look for zoning compliance problems where, when, when I don't, you know, when they're not an active issue, but I have poked around on, on those websites a little bit, and it, it seems like there's some, you know, there's some spread to them, because really wherever you are in Urbana, you're not that far away from Memorial Stadium or-
Lean towards campus is what I would suspect. Not?
I don't know. And, and whenever-
I don't look for Airbnb in Urbana.
Yeah, and whenever, and whenever you check, it might be, you know, it might be different, depending on the, the day of the week or the month that you're looking. So I, I cannot, I, I cannot definitively say.
So that, that's my only question about, of these two higher priority items is, one really has an urgent timeline that I understand, but the other has maybe broader, broader impact. And I would say the same thing about the, the home-based business. I, I guess I'm curious a little bit about if I'm an employee of the university and I'm working at home, that's an extension of the university, right? It's not a home-based business. So is, is that really in the realm of what our current home-based business definition is, or is that outside of the scope of what was envisioned when we created that?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure it was outside the scope of, of when it was created. I just don't think it's worded terribly well, so I think if you're, if you're giving it a strict reading, you could interpret that someone working for the university, but from home needs a permit.
And I do, I do, you know, I don't know when someone's going to build something new downtown, but we know spaces that could be redeveloped downtown and spaces that aren't ready to, but could be soon available for redevelopment. So there, there's a little more, I'd, I'd say there's a little more urgency there than, than what is quantified here. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Alice, I'd be happy to take the chair back.
All right, you can have the chair back.
Mayor Marlin.
Just wanted to add a couple of comments on the CCD. If I remember, especially if using Gregory Place as an example, it's, it was related to who owns the infrastructure, like the street, so the university actually owns that stretch of Gregory between Oregon and Nevada Street, and those are campus uses, for example. Sociology Department rents some of the-
Social work.
Social work, sorry, social work. I should know better. There's social work there, there's residential, there's business, and I'm not even sure the businesses actually own the land. I think the university owns the land that, there was a reason that CCD was created because it was very university campus oriented, that, that didn't apply to some of the other parts of the Cleaver, so, which are privately owned.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, one last quick thing. Kevin, and council members, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Alderman Dennis Roberts sent an email to the entire council that the Historic Commission is planning to provide design criteria for the downtown, so that might be happening.
See, I thought, I thought that there was something like that that I'd heard.
Yeah, Therese.
Um, the, well, one of the other things that I kind of want to point out when we're talking about the 3BU as well as home-based businesses, and that, that type of deal, we have to remember, too, how many, what the percentage of people that rent, and so will be, will these particular zoning, when we're talking about, for example, someone rents a house and then they put it out for Airbnb, or, you know, is, is that allowed? That kind of, that kind of thing, when they don't necessarily own the property, or an example that I, I, I've said in, even in the meeting that we had, somebody who rented the property, rents the property and has a home-based business that's not permitted, and it's a nuisance, but they rent the property. So who's respons, you know, I think those kinds of rules also need to be determined. You know, people, they, they do their hustles, everybody doesn't own the property that they're necessarily doing their hustle on. So I think that, that has to be, there has to be some type of, of demarcation regarding that kind of thing as well. So just that, that's an idea that I'm putting out there.
Grace.
Thanks. On the Airbnb short-term rentals route, you got me down a rabbit hole looking at Airbnb options in Urbana. Thanks, James. And some of them are, you know, entire house, a lot of them are private room, and I was wondering if you could clarify, Kevin, I think from our discussion, you said that this rental kind of thing only applies to non-owner occupied, right? So if the, if someone owns a house and they're Airbnb-ing a basement or a bedroom or something that doesn't fall in here, it's mostly non-owner occupied if it were like the entire house? Is that right? Or apartment or?
No, well, so we only require, in, in residential districts, we only, we only allow owner-occupied bed and breakfast, so, so if somebody, so you can't rent an entire house in a residential district right now, that's just off the table. If somebody is just renting a room, they might fall under our rental registration program, but there's, you know, there's, there might be some gray area there. If they're, if they're renting it out on Airbnb, though, then technically they'd need to apply for a conditional use permit and go through our zoning board and get approval for it.
If you're saying if it is owner-occupied-
Yes.
And then it's like a bed and breakfast. And if it's not owner-occupied, then it doesn't allow for renting the full space for Airbnb stuff?
It doesn't allow renting the space for Airbnb at all. So that's kind of the gap, that's a gap in our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, for people to know what's allowed and how to operate those things, and I imagine also possibly lost tax revenue if it were taxed as bed and breakfast or hotel kind of realm. Is that right?
Well, we do collect tax from Airbnb. We collect hotel and motel tax on an aggregate level citywide.
Okay.
All right, are we done? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your guidance.
Okay, next on our agenda is Council Input and Communications. Any council members wish to speak? Yes, Grace?
Thank you. I appreciate extending the buckets for the ARPA presentations until January 9th. I was going to recommend something along those lines, and I just wanted to clarify, I know it's not questions, but if anyone's willing to give a head nod about, you said Will is collecting all of those answers from the applicants?
Yes, and then he will send them to council.
And I was just going to ask, I know Will's not here tonight, but I would request, recommend that if at all possible, that Will sends us whatever answers we have, like by the end of the week, so that we could take those into consideration, maybe a reminder to the applicants if they could-
His intent is to send them all by the end of the week, so you have them.
He will, yeah. Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Marlin?
Yes, I just wanted to make a few comments related to the extreme cold weather that we had over Christmas weekend and answer some, address some questions that came up during that weekend. First of all, I want to thank the building safety officials, the police, the fire department, and our public works department for being on call and responding to calls throughout the holiday weekend, which, which they did. And during that weekend, we had some confusion arise regarding what was a warming center versus what is an overnight shelter, and I wanted to make sure people understood the difference because people were conflating the two. So I'll start with what an overnight shelter is, and that is something that is, a facility that is staffed overnight, equipped for people to stay overnight, and supervised overnight. Some of the efforts, well, the major efforts of that weekend focused on making sure no one was unsheltered overnight, and even though the facilities are located in Champaign, they serve the Champaign-Urbana, the county. So the County Emergency Management Agency, in addition, the County Emergency Management Agency works with the Red Cross, and they maintain shelter agreements with a number of Urbana locations, which if you had a need for a large-scale overnight shelter, those agreements could be activated and Red Cross would coordinate that with the EMA. So the agreements currently cover Urbana schools, a couple of Urbana churches, and one large building on campus, Ark. The agreements are several years old, and one of the things that do need to be done is update the locations on some of those facilities. But at, at any rate, those agreements are in place, and EMA and Red Cross work on that. So if you had to shut down an entire building, for example, and had to evacuate everybody, God forbid, that would be a case where you'd use those, those agreements. The building safety officials from Urbana did respond to seven phone calls over Christmas Eve, Christmas Day weekend related to heating issues, burst pipes. Some of those were in private apartment buildings. We got a very nice thank you letter today outlining how our staff responded, and some of those calls were in, for example, housing- And some of those calls were in, for example, Housing Authority property Steer Place and privately-owned Florida House, which both of those serve seniors and persons with disabilities. I'll go back to Steer Place in a minute. But anyway, in each case, fire either responded or both fire and building safety officials, they were able to contact property managers or owners. They were able to get emergency technicians out and clean up services if necessary. So there were burst pipes and there were issues with boilers and that sort of thing, but those things got addressed. On a smaller scale, there are facilities that are physically located in Champaign at this point, but they do serve Urbana. Strides, which was formerly operated by CU at Home, is the 24/7 low-barrier shelter that sheltered people this past weekend. Salvation Army was also prepared to work closely with the CU Canteen Run, the Daily Bread Soup Kitchen, the CU Public Health District, the CU Mass Transit District, which provided warming buses and they were at strides that were prepared to transport people between the shelters. Champaign Cunningham Township and Public Works. And so that, those folks were coordinating and soliciting volunteers, especially Cunningham Township rounded up volunteers to serve at Salvation Army overnight. The Urbana first responders and public works personnel were monitoring sites in Urbana and streets to make sure no one was trying to shelter overnight. And again, the goal was to make sure nobody was spending, well, they couldn't have spent, you know, overnight outside. The Red Cross also had a plan in place with the Public Health District that would use the public health facility for an overnight shelter for motorists stranded on the highway. That was specific for that, for this past weekend. Back to Steer Place, I want to thank James especially for help, working with tenants at Steer Place to reach the Housing Authority emergency line, that was on Christmas Day, to report that the heat, problems with the heat and I think was, was it burst pipes or just heating? Yeah, burst pipes. They eventually got through, got technicians out. And as follow-up, Housing Authority Lily Walton reported that A&amp;R Mechanical was called in for follow-up. And if you recall, Steer Place is one of the sites that requested ARPA funding, among other things, to upgrade systems, renovate Steer Place, which includes the boiler system. So there were, so again, there was plans in place for overnight shelters. Where the confusion came in was the issue of warming centers and what a warming center is. By definition, any public facility can be a warming or cooling center. For example, city building lobby was open, it was, could be used as a warming center. It was a perfect storm this past weekend in terms of other public buildings, however, because the libraries in Champaign and Urbana both closed. The Park District facilities were closed, partly due to the extreme weather, partly due to no staffing, and partly due to holiday scheduling. So, so the, but Lincoln Square Mall was open, I heard, until maybe 5:00 PM. So that was, that was technically available as well. So what we're doing is we're going to be working more closely with the sheriff who's at the county level and the emergency management folks to get a more robust list of what could be served as warming centers and then better communicate that information. But the people that were contacting me were conflating a warming center versus an overnight shelter. And what was important was to assure people, people have a place to sleep, and they did. And people got through the weekend and, which was good. But we will be working on a more, better communication plan for warming centers. And bottom line is overnight shelter was provided to everyone who needed it. And again, the facilities, while they may be located in Champaign, serve Urbana residents and we work very closely with the Champaign-Urbana agencies involved. We got through it.
Thank you, Diane. Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Sure. I'll take the chair again. The chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I did want to comment on this, and I was happy to respond to a call I got from a person whose aunt lived in Steer Place and reported that they had no heat, which was a critical situation. That was Christmas Day. Apparently, the heat actually failed Christmas Eve and that is why they had a burst pipe. Urbana Fire Department responded to that emergency and A&amp;R Mechanical came out and responded to the boiler emergency. The challenge is, I went over there Christmas afternoon and I got in and I talked to some residents about their situation. The problem is that the, either because of the deterioration of the system or not incomplete maintenance, there are individual rooms in Steer Place that are not warm enough for the residents, even when the boiler is working. And we're asking to have a follow-up conversation with the Housing Authority about that because I believe an assessment needs to be done of the entire building to go to each room and see what the resting temperature of each room is. Because I talked to individuals who said they were wearing three layers of clothes and sleeping under three blankets because their room was that cold. And these are all individuals who are elderly or at least over 55. I don't like, I'm over 55, but it is, it is a population that it's not a great situation to be in. And I do know that Housing Authority was responding to the emergent issues, but we still, we still need to follow up on that. The other thing that I'm, I'm going to just say, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that we went through what I would call an emergency button moment on the Friday before Christmas Eve, because this was a weather event that was known to be coming 10 days in advance. I mean, if you were looking at the weather, you could see that it was going to be near zero, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. This was a thing that could have been planned for. And while I have, I'm very happy that people reached out to city council to express their concern on Friday about what the situation was, there could have been more planning by what I would call the operational entities in this community to be better prepared rather than trying to solve the problem on a day where most things were closed. One, because it was Christmas Eve observed for a lot of organizations. Two, because we were supposed to have a big snowstorm, which didn't materialize. We only got a little snow, got really cold. It was not, it was not a banner day for people looking like they were prepared if they were in an operational responsibility. And I'm glad that, you know, we got information about that and we can act on it. But as city council, it is, we can only help in that moment. We can't do the underlying work that could have been done in September, October, November for what we need this winter and in the 10 days beforehand, lining up what would be needed if it was going to be zero degrees with 30 mile an hour winds. I've lived in this community since 1989 and I know what that looks like. And we have forecasting capabilities right now that show what's coming. You probably should have started the timer because I think I've exceeded my three minutes. So I'm going to stop there.
I think you have exceeded your time.
And we can, we can all work together to do better on this in general. So thank you.
All right. I apologize for not keeping time to my fellow council members. I will relinquish the chair. Back to James.
Yeah. And I apologize if I started to rant there, but any other council input? Seeing none, I think we have completed our agenda, so the meeting is over. Thank you. We are adjourned.